A motion to approve said agenda.
So moved.
You get a second?
Mr. Mayor, can we move item number 12 under consent agenda to the regular agenda?
Requesting moving item number 12 amendment to the motion to approve zoning text amendment OP P U D to the regular agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion with an amendment to approve the agenda with item number 12 being removed from the consent agenda into the regular agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Can I get an emotion for approval of the minutes from October 1st and October 8th meetings?
Move to approve the minutes from October 1st and October 8th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the two referenced meetings. All those in favor of approval for the minutes as referenced, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are hereby approved. As I think these the one item that Ms. Charz wanted to talk about is now on the regular agenda. We'll wait for that item to come up. We have a consent agenda. I'll read through that real quick, which is to approve number two, approve payment at dispersments. Number three, approve 2025 medical insurance renewals, resolution 2024 dash 109. Approve pay requests, number one Hudson Boulevard segment A improvements. Number five, approve pay request, number five for the 2024 street and utility improvements. Number six, approve pay request, number four for Stillwater Boulevard trunk water main improvements. Number seven, approve pay request. Number nine, final for the Old Village Phase Seven Street and Utility Improvements. Number eight, approve pay request, number two. Final for the 2024 Seal Coat Project. Number nine, approve release of warranties, security for Boulder Pond Second and Third Edition. Ten is approve city comments on the Washington Draft 2025 dash 2029 Capital Improvement Plan. Number 11, approve well-to-generator equipment plans and specification authorized ad for bids. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is hereby approved. Moving into the regular agenda, we have the final assessment hearing. Adopt final assessment hearing role for the 2024 Street and Utility Improvements.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. At September 17th council meeting, the council declared the cost to be assessed and scheduled the final assessment hearing for tonight to be held on October 15th. Subsequent to that, notices were sent out with the final assessment amounts and to schedule this meeting. I'll provide a pre- a brief update on the final class. And then after that, we'd ask the council to open the hearing before taking any action. So the 2024 Street Projects is included two neighborhoods, the Carriage Station Neighborhood and then the Friedrichs Neighborhood on Jamica Court. The scope of improvements are basically spelled out there with a full depth reclamation occurring in both neighborhoods. Spot curb replacement in Carriage Station. We added that parking bay next to the Carriage Station Park. And then there was some minor storms to repair and hydrant adjustments. In Jamica Court, in addition to the full depth reclamation, we did replace the four inch water main with 12 inch water main as part of our trunk system improvements. And then we put in new concrete ribbon curb where there was no curb existing before that. And we also converted the hammerhead turnaround at the end of the cul-de-sac to be a smaller diameter circular 30-foot radius cul-de-sac. So the project's substantially constructed. They're not, it's not fully punched out and completed at this time, but we are showing here the costs at what were presented at the time of the feasibility and at the time that we calculated the preliminary assessment role and then the final project cost. So you can see we're about a million dollars under. A lot of that is because we did decided not to go ahead with the water main upgrade in the Carriage Station Neighborhood, which also would have resulted in that segment of street be fully reconstructed. So there was some significant cost savings there. And then just a lot of coming in under, we got pretty good bids on the project when we got the bids and then coming in under on quantities. And you can see that broke down by neighborhood, about close to a million under in the Carriage Station Neighborhood, about 100,000, 90,000 under in the Jamica Court Neighborhood. This allowed us the opportunity to reduce the assessments from the preliminary to the final assessment hearing. So we were able to walk through the assessment process, the similar calculations using the lesser costs. So in Carriage Station, we're recommending a reduction in the assessment from 6,000 per home to 4,200 per home. And also there was one property that's a commercial institutional property that's being assessed on a linear foot basis. And that cost per foot was being reduced from $155 per foot to 110. And then in the Friedrich Heights Edition, we also saw a little bit of cost reduction. We're able to reduce those assessments as well, but not, not as significantly. But we did reduce it or recommending reducing it from 8,500 down to 8,100. So these are just the assessable properties that are in the final assessment role in your packet for tonight for the Carriage Station Neighborhood. This is the assessment role. Again, I don't expect you to read it, but it's in the packet and what's being adopted is line item by line item for each parcel. Those are first two sheets are the Carriage Station Neighborhood. And then we have the Friedrichs Heights Neighborhood. Properties being shown here are 15 parcels. And then the unit assessment is the same for each of those 15 parcels. That's all I had to present here tonight. I'd be happy to stand for questions.
Can you go back to the map for Carriage Station, please? So that park has been discussed, and that's a city park, not an HOA park. So it shouldn't be on the assessment role, from what I understand. Papers to turn that over to the city were done in 2018. There's been some roundabout that papers haven't been found that were supposed to be filed with the county. So I don't, I don't know that that can be, that should be on this list until that's, that's taken care of. I mean, the city just put a, a volleyball court in the city park. That's not the HOA park.
Yeah, we presented it on the preliminary assessment hearing, and we were showing in the county records that the county record still shows it as HOA owned. So that's why the preliminary assessment role was that. Our presentation at the time was as soon as the transaction is corrected and made, we would remove it. Leading up into the final assessment hearing, I asked the city attorney for direction on what I should be doing with that property. The assessment runs with the land, so my understanding is activity is in place to get that cleared up. And as long as that's cleared up, the assessment will move with whoever the landowner is. The direction I was, I received was to leave it on the assessment role for now.
Where, where is that in the process?
I'm not working on it.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I spoke with the representative of the association last week, and this should have been transferred back in, I think, 2005. And there's a whole agreement between the city and the HOA concerning the HOA's alternative Septix site and various cross-access easements for that and establishing that and getting approval from the MPCA. And a lot of that wasn't followed up on by, I think, the city. So we're trying to work through that right now because basically the HOA is saying we're not going to deed the property over to you until we get all this fixed because that was part of the original agreement with the city. So we're working through all that. I would think, you know, it'll happen. It's probably not going to happen by the time we need to certify this, but as the city engineer said, it, you know, it runs with the land. So, you know, if it's city-owned land, it'll have an assessment on it, and it's not personally to the HOA.
All right. Thank you. That was my question.
Sorry, could you just clarify? So you say it might not be fully certified before this November 15th date?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the land may not be transferred from the HOA to the city by the time that the assessment is certified against the, the property. But at that point, the city would take the property subject to the assessment, and it would be the city's responsibility to deal with the assessment. And that's what I told the HOA because they were concerned about it, obviously, since it's, says it's their property and they don't want to be responsible for the assessment, which they shouldn't be.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Griffin? Griffith, sorry? All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to go into the public hearing for the final assessment role for the 2024 Street and Utility Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to go into the open hearing for final assessment role. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so we will go into the public hearing at 7:11 PM. Do you have, I believe, a couple people that wanted to speak? Mr. Ian Stiving? Staving? Oh, okay. Maybe they're not here. They had a, there was a an email sent in. I don't know if you got this. Jack for the residents at 5097. Marques Trail Circle North. They were objecting to the assessment due to a joint in their driveway along with some photographs that were sent. Have you been able to look at them?
I saw the email at the end of the day here. I had no previous knowledge of that and have not had a chance to follow up with my team on that.
They indicated that in 2019, they paid around 6,000 to have their driveway fully replaced. Estimated lifespan of 20 years. But the poor repair at the end of the driveway, it's where the saw cut happened, and then that butt joint. They're showing some space in there and they're afraid of water intrusion and then decreasing the life of, of their their driveway. There's a small section of yard adjacent to the driveway that did not receive a remediation. I don't know if it was torn out or not. Where black dirt or sod was not replaced, but I think from what I've seen, most of that had been done throughout the neighborhood. I haven't looked at this one in particular. So that was one public comment. And then I have Mr. Clifford Goujot? Goujot? Sorry?
Thank you, Charles. And so my first comment is going to relate to, I live in the Carriage Station Neighborhood, by the way. My first comment's going to relate to the
Could you just state your address for the record, please?
12187 Marques Lane Cove North in Lake Elmo. First comment is going to relate to the city park and the assessment of, I believe it's $12,000. First, I don't know how things could get so lost, not only once but twice. The association has email from the summer of 2018 when the then president of the association signed paperwork in the city offices of Lake Elmo that would transfer ownership of this park to the city. And I heard a 2005 reference mentioned. Maybe this was supposed to have been done even that many years prior. At the time of the preliminary assessment hearing back, and I think it was April of this year for this project, it was again at some point called to the city's attention that this was a mistake. And the HOA firmly believed that this property was owned by the city regardless of what the property rolls at the county say. That's just, it's, it's errors. It's things falling through the cracks, its balls being dropped. And I, yes, according to the county, the association still owns it, but that's in formality only. And this really needs to be resolved before these roles are approved. And I object as a member of the association and a participant on the HOA board. I object to that $12,000 assessment. And I don't think this council should adopt any role at this point that is inaccurate from the standpoint of what should be happening with the ownership of that property. So with that, I'm not sure if there's any other thing I need to do to object to that or sign a paper or whatever. But it's, it's interesting that it's still on the rolls and here being presented to you for approval. I just find it very interesting. The other things I'd like to talk about with regard to the assessment are three. One of them is the Minnesota statute governing interest on unpaid assessment balances. Happens to be statute 429.061 subdivision two, adoption of interest in paragraph four of that state statute. Second thing, adoption of the assessment resolution by council as it relates to interest charges and the date the resolution is adopted. And third, the notice to property owners, specifically the notice of hearing on proposed assessment. First off, the Minnesota statute governing interest on assessment balances. I will read the pertinent piece of what I would like to reference and talk about. Quote, "To the first installment of each assessment shall be added interest on the entire assessment from a date specified in the resolution levying the assessment, not earlier than the date of the resolution until December 31st of the year in which the first installment is payable. And to each subsequent installment shall be added interest for one year on all unpaid assessments." Little bit of background, property owners may pay off or I presume pay down assessment balances at any time. Presently, the city pays principal on or around January or February of a calendar year. As this typical interest is paid twice a year on bonds, happens to be that the city pays this January and again late July. That information was provided to me by your finance director, Clarissa Hadler. Property owners slash homeowners paying an assessment in annual installments plus interest pay a full year's interest when they pay after November in any calendar year. There's only a small window where a pay down or payoff can avoid interest, and it's my understanding from discussions I had with Clarissa that that window is generally October 15th to November 14th of a calendar year. And so I, I understand that there is a limitation here in terms of what this council is able to do or must do because of Minnesota statute. But I'll proceed further here. By only allowing a small window of time where a homeowner, property owner can pay down or pay off the remaining balance of an assessment, the property owner or homeowner is placed at a significant disadvantage relative to governing authorities, the bond market, and investors. Prior to 1990, the banking industry was allowed to use an interest computation called the Rule of 78ths. This method required borrowers to pay a greater portion of interest in the earlier part of a loan cycle and decrease the potential savings for the borrower in paying off their loan. In short, it favored the banks. This interest calculation method was outlawed in 1992 for any loan greater than 61 months. Virtually all reputable lenders only use simple interest today. If any bank were doing what Minnesota statute allows this and other councils to do by charging a full year's worth of interest, even though principal may have been paid down in February or March of that calendar year, you know, number of months prior, just seems like unconscionable to me. And again, I want to stress that I know that this is Minnesota statute and your hands are tied. But it doesn't preclude this council from working with Minnesota's legislative representatives from this area to get this changed. In May 1923, excuse me, in May 2023, the Supreme Court ruled that Minnesota's law allowing county governments to retain sale proceeds over and above the balance of unpaid property taxes, interest, and penalties violated the Fifth Amendment's taking clause, which bars the government from taking private property for public use without adequately compensating property owners as well as the Eighth Amendment's ban on excessive fines. This has to do with the publicized Hennepin County case in which a condominium owned by an elderly woman was seized for non-payment of taxes. And the county in Hennepin sold the property for somewhere around 40,000, paid her 15 or $20,000 of interest, penalties, and unpaid taxes, and pocketed the rest. Well, it went to the Supreme Court, and again, I read what the Supreme Court ruled, and it was a nine to nothing decision. And while this is not specific to the Hennepin County situation in that lawsuit, I believe there are some similarities here with Minnesota statute concerning interest on assessments. The playing field is not level. The statute and timing of interest calculation favors local government and bond investors positioned to receive interest beyond the date principal was paid. Simple interest calculations would level the playing field. Bond investors are sophisticated people. They fully understand that fixed income investments include any number of risks, one of which is early payment risk on bond investments. Simple interest to the date of principal pay down or payoff would not deter their involvement. I urge the council, and again, I urge the council to work directly with our Minnesota legislative representatives to change applicable statute so that interest is charged only to the date of principal pay down or payoff where such payment is made in the current calendar year. Second item, adoption of the assessment resolution by council as it relates to interest charges. For 2024, the notice of hearing on proposed assessment permits a property owner to pay an assessment without interest so long as their, as their payment is received on or before October 31st. The notice was silent on paying a portion of the full assessment. It read as if it was either an all or nothing proposition. Further, someone paying their assessment beginning November 1st through November 14th would pay interest calculated through December 31st of this year. Later in the notice, however, the first annual installment is discussed. Said installment will include interest, quote, "from the date of adoption of the assessment resolution." Presumably that's going to be October 15th today. Two things I think to very much consider debate or address here. If someone pays all or some of their assessment, why would the city charge interest to December 31st? Why wouldn't interest be calculated to the date of payment as long as that payment is received from November 1st through the 14th? It seems that only the unpaid assessment amount certified to the county should be charged interest through December 31st. Second, why would the city collect interest on unpaid assessment balances back to October 15th? Excuse me, back to October 15th, the resolution adoption date, when property owners are told they may pay assessments interest-free up to and including October 31st? So if you only chose to pay half of, say, the $4,200, if this, the way that this is worded now, you would go back and I'd be paying interest back to October 15th instead of back to November 1st. Afforded that opportunity. I chose not to. But here again, why wouldn't it simply go from November 1st? You're giving some, you're giving people an opportunity to pay interest-free up to November 1st. Make it that way for everybody, whether they paid it off or paid it down. The governing statute that I read earlier gives the council flexibility with the language "shall be added interest on the entire assessment from a date specified in the resolution levying the assessment, not earlier than the date of the resolution." So there is some wiggle room here to give you guys flexibility to go back to November 1st and sit all the way back to the 15th for people who choose to not pay any of it or pay it down, but not off. So that is essentially what I, wraps up what I have to say about that particular topic. Finally, the city's notice to property owners, specifically the notice of hearing on proposed assessment. When I received the notice of hearing on proposed assessment, I had to reread sections of it to understand my options when interest would begin, the related calendar dates. In short, it was darn confusing. And I'm an educated person. I've got an accounting degree. I worked in the banking industry for 30-plus years. Different dates were mentioned at different times in one paragraph. Moreover, language such as "prior to" was used instead of using "on" or "before" language when referring to key dates and deadlines. Further, the notice did not speak to pay downs of an assessment, only payoff. I drafted a revised notice, sectioned it according to dates and various timelines and actions, discussed it with the mayor, provided him an act, an electronic copy of my draft, and I urged the city's finance director and legal counsel to either adopt my draft or adopt an essentially similar document for all future assessments and hearing notices. Why? Because it would make things much, much clearer for the people receiving these. And if anyone would like an electronic copy, I'd be happy to provide it to each of the council members. Not a big deal, be happy to do that. That concludes my comments, questions, requests, et cetera. So thank you for the opportunity to come and speak.
Thank you. I don't think we have anybody else that's looking to speak on this, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now out of public hearing. Entertain a motion for
I'm sorry, I guess, can I just ask one more question here?
Absolutely.
So I guess, yeah, on, on the first page on that paragraph where we're talking about the preliminary assessment hearing on November 21st, note that the Carriage Station Park was listed, but at the end it says it's advisable that the fully executed transfer get completed prior to the certification of the assessment to the county on November 15th, 2024. So again, maybe I'm just missing it, but do we, are we, we're not there yet. And that's in, in process to get the fully executed transfer completed. And we don't know for certain if that's going to be done by November 15th. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to remind you that the assessment goes with the property. So we're assessing the property. Doesn't matter whose name is on there. And right now it is the HOA, but at some point it will be, it'll be the city, and the city can assess itself. So there, there's no need to get that done by the November 15th, other than it probably make things a little easier for the city and, you know, dealing with the assessment issue. But, you know, we're working on it and I, you know, it's just, we have to clear some things up with the MPCA. And there's an easement agreement we have to work out with the HOA. And we have to also verify that another easement had been recorded and enforced on the property across the street. So, I mean, there are a number of things that need to get done by that time, so I can't guarantee it's going to happen. But like I said, it goes with the property, so I guess I'm not concerned if the city just goes ahead and adopts the assessment role as is, and then the assessment will be on that particular property and the city will become the property owner.
But going with financially, is that going to have any impact on the HOA? So if it's not
It's not their, it's not their liability. It's the, it's the property liability. I mean, if they were to try to sell it, somebody would say, I don't want to buy it because it has an assessment on it. And we're not going to say that to them. I assume we're not going to say, we don't want this anymore because there's an assessment on it. That's not, you know, how we're working this deal. So, yeah, it'd just be if they were going to sell it, but we're going to transfer it back over, you know, to go to us and we'll be responsible for the assessment. And I don't know how that works from an accounting perspective on the city's end, but
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but
Um, sir, that's not permissible in the council. No, we're not speaking No, we're not speaking from the crowd, Mr. Bruhl. Councilmember Holt.
So to clarify then, um if it doesn't get done prior to then when people are starting to pay assessments, this is not a situation where officers of the HOA would be essentially risking their own financial status. That's not applicable for this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no, it's a liability of the property. So it's just on the property and if something, if the HOA were to sell it, you know, it would show up in the property records and whoever was buying it would say, hey, there's a assessment on here. I want you to pay it off before I take ownership of the property. But here, you know, the property is going to be conveyed over to the city. The city is not going to say that. So there's, there's really no, there's no liability to the HOA here and they're not going to be asked to pay it.
How long can they carry that liability before there's any penalties?
So the, if, I mean, if the, the tax isn't paid in the current year, then it would be assessed a penalty. But if it gets turned over to us, then we are essentially paying ourselves for interest and penalties. So we can either just do the, the process to wipe it off the books and send that, you know, the paperwork that we do, um or we just pay it and it's sort of a, an in and out from our books.
I mean, is there a way we can legally change the assessment right now to zero it out and assign it to us, even though we are not the current property owner? Can we assign that assessment to ourselves and say, yes, we will be paying it? We are saying so. We know the property is not legally ours yet on the deed. But just to make, is that cleaner? Is that possible with the way assessment would work?
I think that'd be a question for council.
Well, and if it's a policy thing, that's one thing. But is, is there a legal issue with that in terms of how the assessment statute works?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't think there's a, I mean, the issue is, I think we want the HOA to cooperate here. So I think there is some incentive. I mean, I, I think, it sounds like it's been a failure on the city's part to get this done these last twenty years. But um, you know, at the same time, we want to make sure the HOA cooperates. The city does have improvements on that park land. So we want to make sure it gets transferred and um we want the full cooperation of the HOA. And I think that is an incentive to, to get that done.
So there are, there are still steps by multiple parties that need to happen.
Correct.
Including MPCA.
Yes.
I guess just to go back to the tax comment though. So if, if it is assessed on November fifteenth and this isn't resolved by the end of the year, would there be the penalty then, since they hadn't resolved that um assessment by the end of the year?
A penalty would be applied next year if the assessment isn't paid. So theoretically, if the paperwork didn't get completed by the end of next year, then there would be this penalty on, on the books for that. It might get a little trickier to, to get that off. But if, if, if it gets taken care of sometime next year, then it shouldn't be a problem. Because again, that penalty just gets transferred over to us.
Over with that assessment. The penalty goes with the assessment and then...
The assessment is, it's on the PID.
Okay.
So it, it really doesn't matter to us and on the assessment side whose name is on it.
Sorry for getting there slowly. Thank you.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-one-two, adopting the final assessment role for the twenty twenty-four street and utility improvements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. Councilmember Holt.
It, it is disappointing to know that it appears the city, long before any of us and long before current staff, that there was a ball drop. So that, that is disappointing. But I also hope that all, all the entities will work together to figure this out because it certainly is a situation that no one wants to keep as it is. I am curious in the long term from a process improvement standpoint. I will defer to, to others on this. But if there are ways to make that language clear on the notice, I fully support looking into that. I don't know if it's currently a, a league Minnesota cities template, possibly, likely. But if there are ways that, that's um, I know in my career, plain language is the thing that's been going on for twenty years with state government. But uh I, I fully understand that feedback and I appreciate it. So if there are ways, I, I fully support that down the road.
I did uh have the chance to talk with Mr. Bujo regarding that and obviously after the statement. I was, I was a little confused by some of the language too. All I knew was, yep, I gotta pay this amount and here's some dates. But uh hopefully that, that, and then when he explained it, it was a little clear. So hopefully that, you know, the next time we send out a statement, we can put it in terms that are easier to understand. Yes.
Um I actually did take Cliff's uh suggestions, some of them, and, and reviewed and made my letter that I sent out, which is essentially that final invoice to people at the property to this, this group. So he had some great ideas and we've already implemented some of that on, on my letter. So...
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Things get better with, with cooperation and collaboration. Anything else to discuss? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is number fourteen. Accept feasibility report and assessment waiver agreement for Stillwater Area School District Improvements, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-one-zero. Again, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm bringing uh for you tonight the feasibility report for the Stillwater Area School District Utility Improvements. This feasibility report was authorized by the city council on May twenty-first in response to a petition that we received from the school district. The school is in the process of, of expanding Oakland Middle School. And as part of that process, they had requested a feasibility study to look at the cost to connect to sanitary sewer and water main. Also, they're looking at the new elementary school at the intersection of Lake Elmo Avenue and Tenth Street. And they were requesting, and that's being brought into the MUSA. So that needs to be connected to sanitary sewer as well. So the petition involved both school sites and um the feasibility report was done to look at what the public improvements would be that would be assessed back to the school district versus what private improvements the school district would then do. So I'm going to walk through uh the findings of the report at this point. So this map here shows you sort of the existing situation and the, and the proposed situation. On the existing situation, we have a, a long, um, the purple line is a force main coming from the old village. It's a sixteen-inch, large diameter force main. It then finds a manhole that goes by gravity in the, in that yellow line. Um, it uh hits a gravity sewer twenty-four inch there. Um, and everything in the old village comes down and discharges to that manhole. Then a few years later, um sort of an unplanned event happened where Tartan Park was, was developed into Royal Gulf and that was brought into the MUSA. And we added three hundred and eighty-four units by putting a lift station um at the end of Palmer Drive on Tenth Street there. And we brought another force main, a six-inch force main over and that ties into that fourteen, or that sixteen-inch force main on Lake Elmo Avenue. So it's took a little bit of the capacity out of the old village sewer by adding those units into there at that time. But that's the, that's the sewer system in that vicinity, uh the Tenth Street, Lake Elmo Avenue area as it stands today, uh with the only gravity manhole really beginning at that intersection of Fifth Street and Lake Elmo Avenue. So with the, the two new schools coming in on the proposed map there, I highlighted the two school sites in, in yellow. You also see a pink square that's a residential existing property that ends up coming into the feasibility report because we do end up, in order to get sewer to Oakland Middle School, they're technically in the MUSA, this, this pink property. They're technically in the MUSA and we will be getting sewer to them as well. So they're, you'll see that they're um brought into the project as well. So we're trying to get sewer to both of those properties. So what we're looking at uh in the proposed situation is from the Royal, um Palmer Drive is the, the road entrance off of Tenth Street, going into Royal Drive, um and there, or Palmer Drive. And there's a water main and a sewer. So the purple line and the blue line is a sanitary sewer and a water main, gravity sewer that the city will install, bring it to the south side of Tenth Street and run it along the, right away of Tenth Street over to the school property and stub it there. At that point, um you'll see, you'll see lighter green and magenta lines or whatever, um running along the school property. That would be improvements that they would install as part of their site project. And so that's been communicated that, to them. So those costs aren't included in the feasibility report costs that we'll be presenting here tonight. Um it's just that gravity line getting to the Oakland Middle School. Then in addition to that, we looked at how to do this lift station force main configuration. Um and we're, and we came up with a plan. There was about eight different alternatives that were looked at. So there was a lot of different alternatives looked at, what would be the best solution. It turns out we don't have to do any upgrades to the Royal Gulf Lift Station. So that's going to stay as it is. What we are doing, however, though, is we're installing a new eight-inch force main from that lift station along Tenth Street to Lake Elmo Avenue. And we'll end up abandoning the six-inch um in place, the, the existing one. We looked at dual force mains, we looked at a lot of different things. But this turned out to, just to put in a new one at eight inch and abandon the existing six inch. When we get to the intersection of Tenth and Lake Elmo Avenue, we're running a new, um the, the orange line, a, a new ten-inch force main turning south and coming to that same manhole, discharging at the same point that the existing sixteen-inch one is discharging. So we're disconnecting the Royal Gulf Lift Station from that sixteen-inch manhole today and connecting it to a new force main. So we get that old village capacity back basically by doing this. Um and then the Lake Elmo Elementary School will have a new lift station shown as the red dot with a short private force main coming to that same connection point. So that's, that, what you see in that red dot with the lift station on the school site where the force main would be built by the school district outside of the scope of this project. But essentially what it does, the end product is Oakland Middle School, the Royal Gulf neighborhood and Lake Elmo Elementary sh- uh sharing that force main going south on Lake Elmo Avenue.
So just a quick question. So originally we have a sixteen-inch force main going south from Tenth? And would that run, still run in operation in parallel to the ten inch?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and they're not connected at all. So the sixteen inches coming straight from the village and being disconnected and the ten inches, a new second one.
Got it. Thank you. Yep, go ahead.
And then with the private that's going on Oakland in this proposal, they're, they're obviously, it's not city-owned. So that would never connect and go south to additional parcels to the south. The intention, I presume, is to come up from the north from the bus terminal?
The, the answer is different for the different utilities. For the sewer, it would be private, it'd be a private service stub. The water main would be privately installed by them, but we would take ownership of the water main and the hydrants. And on the south end of that Oakland's Middle School, that would be a loop connection into new development coming, coming from the south there. So we would take ownership of the water main piece.
And when you...
Just like we do for any development project where they install it, then we take ownership of it.
And then, because you had mentioned that it adds some capacity back into Old Village. Are we talking like additional recs, uh, capacity?
It's, it's, yeah, it's not, it's not nearly, you know, three hundred and eighty-four homes and um it's, you're not going by gravity, you're going through force main. It's complicated equations with pumps and total dynamic head and everything. It's not a one-to-one. It's, you know, maybe like forty recs or fifty rec back and that's really all we took away before. I don't know the exact number and it depends on different operating conditions. But um, yeah, whatever that capacity was, we lost when we added that in there. We're getting back.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So it took a little bit of, uh, like I said, we reviewed quite a few alternatives. That was the alternative we came up with. We did share that along the way with representatives of the school district and their, their team. We now have total estimated project costs, uh sanitary sewer improvements with the two new force mains and that short gravity stub is just under one point six million. And the water main extension is just about a hundred and seventy thousand. Um we looked at our assessment policy for that and we're looking at allocating the cost on a residential equivalent unit. Um the new elementary school based on the flow data that they gave us is a hundred and forty-two recs. The Oakland Middle School with the expansion is going to be a hundred and forty recs. And then we have that one residential property that's, that's one rec. So you have two hundred and eighty-three total recs sharing in the sanitary sewer improvements and you have a hundred and forty-one recs sharing in the water main improvements. So that gives you a fifty-six hundred dollar per unit rec assessment and a twelve hundred dollar per rec assessment for water main. So fifty-six hundred for sewer and twelve hundred for water. So then we go to the assessment policy and we have those three parcels, the two schools and the one property. Um and it's really just an equation of that fifty-six hundred times the number of recs. So this is the assessment role that will be, that's in the feasibility report. So you're looking at um the elementary school having a, just under eight hundred thousand dollar sewer assessment. Oakland Middle School having seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar sewer assessment and a hundred and seventy thousand dollar water assessment. And then the one residential property will have a fifty-six hundred dollar sewer assessment and a twelve hundred dollar water assessment. Now, the thing about sewer and water utilities is they also have connection fees when they go to connect. And so these are costs that aren't uh part of the assessment. They're part of, they, these are obtained at the time of building permit and connection to the sewer and water systems. But it's, it's important to identify these costs and make sure that the property owners know that there's more costs o- o- on top of those assessment costs. So um we have sewer and water connection fees that basically um for a sanitary sewer, it's a three hundred dollar per SAC charge, a one thousand dollar per rec connection charge. And then there's a Met Council SAC fee that's twenty-two thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars. So that comes out to be, um, you know, sixty-four eighty-five per rec unit in just fees alone. Um on the water side, you don't have the Met Council fee, so it's the four thousand dollars per rec unit. And so you can see on the far right column what those um charges are in addition. And those would come with the building permit. Even if you had sewer and water to those sites and these were new buildings coming in, they would be paying, those are the fees they'd be paying as part of a standard development. So I summarized all those costs, nothing, there's no new costs on this page, but I just basically spelled it out by each property since there's only three properties. So you have the new elementary school looking at a, an assessment of seven hundred and ninety-five, two hundred, a SAC and connection fees of nine hundred and twenty thousand. And then, of course, they have to also build that lift station and that short force main seg- segment is something else they have to weigh into their cost side. On the water side, um I did put in there this time, you know, that, that elementary school will also be connecting the water. They'll be putting the water internal to the site on their own cost. And then they'll have the WAC and connection fees of five hundred and sixty-eight thousand. The Oakland Middle School will have a sa- an assessment of seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, the SAC and connection fees of nine hundred and seven thousand nine hundred. And then they'll have that wat- gravity sewer service extension on their own property to get to the building. Um and then they'll have the water assessment of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand and then the connection fees of five hundred and sixty thousand. And then they'll also have to extend a water main to the south part of their property as part of their site development improvements. And then the uh one residential property that's gotten tangled up in this here, you're looking at a fifty-six hundred dollar assessment, sixty-four eighty-five in connection fees. A total of eleven, twelve thousand eighty-five dollars for the SAC, for the sewer charges. Um and then fifty-two hundred for the water charges. And then they also have to pay a contractor to connect from the main then to their, their home as well. So they will have additional costs on top of that. So where we are in the project schedule, as I mentioned, it was back in May that we received the petition. We brought it forward to council and had the author, the study authorized on May twenty-first. We're presenting that here tonight. We're asking the council to accept the report and call for a hearing on the improvement. That would get scheduled for November nineteenth. When we work with these kinds of large costs and these kinds, and working in a petition form, what we, we've had, I've worked with the city attorney to draft up a waiver of assessment agreement. And that's been sent to the school district at this point for their review and to, and to, and, and our direction to them is we'd like to come back on the nineteenth and have that signed already. And technically, you don't have to do the public improvement hearing if it was only the school district that was involved and they were signing that. We do have the one residential party that's, um, that's in this that we're not, wouldn't be asking for them to sign the waiver. So we'd still have to hold the public improvement hearing, but we would be looking for the, come back on the nineteenth with that waiver. come back on the nineteenth with that waiver agreement agreed to and signed at that point. And so that would give us conclusive evidence that the schools reviewed the costs, reviewed the scope of improvements, is in agreement with it, and is asking the city to go forward. So it would be at that point that we would have the council direct us to begin the design phase of the project and incur the costs to do the detailed plans and specifications, all with the idea of then constructing these improvements next year. That, I'll be happy to stand for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Griffin?
Yeah. Have the private residence owners, have they had any discussion with about this yet, or any feedback?
I have not reached out to them yet. In fact, it really was kind of over my head until I was doing the assessment.
Okay.
The assessment piece of this.
Yeah.
And just realized, oh, to apply the policy fair and equitable like we always do, they are actually a benefiting property. So, we do typically present the report initially to the council for approval, and it's between now and the public improvement hearing that we usually do our outreach to the property owners. And so that would be something I'd be doing between now and November nineteenth.
Okay. Any comment, you know, from their discussion from the school district as far as when they saw kind of the prices too, that that private residence might happen to be paying in addition?
I haven't heard anything back from them on my recent transmission of the, of the report and the documents. If you may recall, when we authorized the feasibility report, we did do a high level and through a lot of these costs, they had seen all the fees. They had seen costs that turned out to be similar enough, so I don't think it'll be too much of a sticker shock. They should have seen this already.
Okay.
In terms of their own costs.
I guess specifically, did they comment at all by chance about the private residence that is also going to be brought into, into this situation?
They did not, no.
Okay.
Do we know if that private residence is currently on a CAC filter?
I, I don't.
I don't know that you would necessarily know that, just wondering.
I just know the route to get to them is right by their house, and so we'd be putting the stub there, and they're actually in the MUSA, so it makes sense that we would actually make that stub. I think the, the rules for sewer connection is they would have two years, they would be required to connect within two years, or there is a penalty the city has, water typically is an option to connect, whether they want to connect or not.
Okay. Was that part of the MUSA after we made, after there was the vote for expanding the MUSA with the new elementary school, or were they, they were in the MUSA prior to that?
This MUSA's always existed on this part of the city.
Okay.
Simran and Oakland Middle Schools been in the MUSA for a long
And, sorry, the private residence as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And to clarify, that home does have a well advisory?
Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Griffin? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve Resolution twenty-two-four-dash-one-one-zero, receiving the feasibility report and calling a hearing on improvement for the Stillwater area school district utility improvements.
Second.
Second, all right. Discussion? Councilmember Holt.
Just thank you for the work on this. I know it's a very large topic. There's a lot of, a lot of inputs on this, and it's obviously pretty big in scale, but thank you for the in-depth work on this.
Any other discussion? All right. I'll call a question. All those in favor of approving Resolution number twenty-two-four-dash-one-one-zero, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So approved. All right. Item number fifteen, award contract for well two PFAS removal equipment procurement, Resolution You're on a roll, you might as well just stay there, huh?
Yeah, except I don't have my report, but it's back in my desk. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We took bids for, on August, October tenth, we received bids for the PFAS removal equipment. We received two bids. Aquus Vets was the low bid. We did do an alternate bid, which included, this is procurement for two steel vessels, the filter cartridge, so this is the treatment equipment itself, we're procuring early because it has long lead time. We'll be coming back at a later date with the construction contract for installation. But it also included the purchase of the IX filter media, and we did an alternate bid with the rinsed or pre-rinsed or not rinsed. So typically, you have the media delivered to the site, installed in the vessels, and then you have to do a thorough rinsing, and they talk about twenty bed volumes of water. So it's a lot of water you put into this media when you do start up. It's a lot of water that's then wasted, and because we don't have a sanitary sewer system there, you're trucking that all out of there. So it's a lot of trucks carrying the water out. So we did do an alternate bid with the pre-rinced material. It came in at about fifteen thousand more for the pre-rinced material, but it ends up saving us quite a bit of cost in trucking and on the backside of getting this installed. So we're recommending award of the contract to Aquus Vets for the equipment and Purelight for the pre-rinced media filter.
Any reason why the number two bidder did not bid on alternate two?
I'm not aware of why they chose not to do the pre-rinced.
Okay. Alternate B was which one?
It could have been complicated had there been less, but it turned out that we, Aquus was the low bid
Yeah, yeah.
all the way through, so that made it, the award recommendation easier.
Plus alternate B, okay. Councilmember Holt?
It's a couple steps down the road, but when it comes to that media, process standpoint, are we applying for the grants a year before we know the replacement is coming up, six months before? Like, how does that work in terms of where industry is at and what the expectations are?
For the O and M part of it?
Yes.
I can honestly say I haven't got that far. If you remember, just the last meeting, I got the grant to build the project, so.
It was, yes.
It's just two weeks ago, so, yeah, it, well, it's something we'll have to certainly give some thought to. We're not exactly sure whether we'll get three years or four years out of it before it has to be exchanged, but we'll.
If hypothetically, say we are in a position where we can have it on hand and ready prior to usage, is that a space issue? Like, is that something where we have that ability?
Yeah, it can be, and especially if we want to continue with the pre-rinced option. It has a shelf life to it, where if you pre-rinse it, you still, you do have to get it delivered and installed within a period of time, or you kind of lose that advantage and have to go through the thorough rinse again. So have, you know, that's not to say you can't pre-buy something and store it, but you would waive that option in that circumstance.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions for Mr. Griffin? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve Resolution number twenty-two-four-dash-one-zero-eight, accepting bids and awarding a contract to Aquus Vets for the base bid plus alternate B in the total amount of six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-one cents for the well two PFAS removal equipment.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. And Resolution number twenty-two-four-dash-one-zero-eight, discussion?
Councilmember Holt, I think that's a good recommendation possibly to consider about just having something on hand, and I guess I don't know what the exact difference, the cost was to have the water hauled out if you'd go with the, the non-pre-rinced, but again, maybe we, if that's an option, just so we aren't in a situation where we're waiting. And again, I guess we don't know how long it takes to get them in the first place, but I guess it's something to look into, and if storage isn't a space, or storage isn't an issue.
We have, we have some estimates now, but I think our estimates will get better when we go through this first install and start to see some of these real, these costs go live on us and
Yeah.
getting it up into operation, we'll very quickly probably get a handle on the life of that media and the cost of that exchange.
Okay. Great.
Any other discussion? All right. Call the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution twenty-two-four-dash-one-zero-eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution is approved. Thank you. Item number sixteen, League of Minnesota Cities, LMCIT twenty-two-five statutory tort limits.
Mayor and council, my apologies, this is normally on the consent agenda, so I'm happy to answer. Actually, I'm happy to defer any questions to Sarah, who knows more about this, but this is essentially an annual decision that we have to make each year for our insurance required by the League of Minnesota Cities.
It's essentially paying for the insurance to keep our liability reduced.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the council has to make an affirmative decision on whether it wants to be subject to the statutory tort liability limits, which are at one point five million. I don't know why you would want to waive that, but
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
I did have a city that used to waive it, but they had a couple proprietary operations, like a marina and electric utility, and they felt as a matter of public policy that if somebody were to get injured related to those operations, that they should be entitled to their full extent of their
Okay.
payout, but we don't have anything like that here.
All right. Are there any questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve maintaining the current one-thousand-dollar deductible for the city's property and liability insurance and authorize election to not waive the statutory tort limits.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move forward on the motion. Any discussion? No, I'll just call the question. All those in favor of the motion to approve maintaining the current thousand-dollar deductible for the city's property and liability insurance and authorize election to not waive the statutory tort limits, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Number seventeen, tender to replacement purchase. Chief?
Mayor and council, back at the August budget work session, I proposed the idea of bringing forward the twenty-two-seven CIP purchase of the tender to replacement. At that time, timing of the purchase was critical to continue to save costs on a quickly increasing vehicle as time goes on. When it was initially proposed, the reason for moving this forward was just based on what we're seeing in the industry for rapidly increasing costs, four to ten percent on the annual for a purchase. This is a truck that slated for replacement in twenty-two-seven, and given the current lead time on construction, wanted to try to get this approved and get a spot in line as soon as we can to still take delivery in twenty-seven. Some of the big changes since the workshop, worked with Rosenbauer, our manufacturer, to secure a pre-emissions change diesel engine. So in twenty-two-five, the federal government has new standards on diesel motors. Those come with an extremely high cost. By securing, potentially securing a twenty-two-four allocation for this diesel engine, if we're able to sign the contract yet this year or soon, we're able to save approximately fifty thousand dollars on this, on this purchase. There isn't a whole lot of these twenty-two-four pre-emission change diesel units out there, so being able to secure one would be a high priority. The other change since the budget workshop, when it was first proposed, the, there's just been an update in the purchasing co-op that we'll use for this, we'll use Sourcewell instead of the HGAC Buy. There's, it's still a cooperative purchasing program through the state of Minnesota. It's actually run out of the state of Minnesota. I think they're out of the Saint Cloud area, so it's, but there, a lot of manufacturers around here have switched to use them for the cooperating purchase agreements. And we've done that in the past for all of our large equipment, going back to the latter purchase in twenty-fourteen. Otherwise, the timeline still remains the same. We're still looking at twenty-two-six delivery of the chassis, and in twenty-two-six, when that chassis does arrive to the, to the factory, is when we would have to make our first payment, similar like we've done in the past for the other trucks. And we're still looking at a twenty-two-seven delivery if ordered soon. So again, I understand this is a large purchase. You know, a few years ago when we ordered a similar truck, I didn't expect the market and where we would be is a sixty percent increase over the cost, so I don't take this purchase lightly. Worked hard with our staff to develop a spec that meets our needs now and in the future. But hopefully, you know, again, this is a vehicle that will last us twenty years, and being a similar vehicle, we can utilize it in a different way like we do our current engine, and hopefully extend the life of both of those vehicles because they're not completely different trucks. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those.
Questions for Chief?
Yeah, do you have one? And then, so with the, the current one, so after we'd acquired this one, would we, I believe we'd sell the previous one, correct?
Correct. So the vehicle in question that we're looking to replace is a two thousand and seven Spartan chassis. It's a tandem axle, tender pumper. It's a significantly, significantly different vehicle than what we would look to get. It's twenty-seven-hundred gallons of water, huge pump, huge water capacity. We just don't have the need for that type of vehicle in our current operations and how our city is continuing to maintain and add water infrastructure. So when, when we do take delivery and have that new vehicle in service, we would place this vehicle up for auction through our normal public surplus means. And, you know, tough to say on what the market's going to be like, but I would, I would anticipate, you know, nearly, you know, hundred, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars for, for this vehicle. It's tough to say on the condition of that vehicle. Hopefully, we'll, you know, we'll take care of it and maintain it and the best we can. But this truck has also seen several significant repairs over the past couple of years for its pump. It's got a very large pump in it, and it takes a lot of water, it needs a lot of water when it's being used, and that's just not how, you know, our operations use that truck. So we'll be careful with it over the next couple of years, but it will go up for auction, and those proceeds will come right back into the vehicle replacement fund.
Just from like, from the financial standpoint, again, I have to imagine, I mean, you know, if we started this process in twenty-two-seven versus twenty-two-four, and that vehicle's three years older, that price is gonna, the sale price has to go down a significant amount, I'm assuming.
It's tough to, yeah, I mean, it's tough to say on what's going to happen over the next couple of years. I mean, again, we're still talking, you know, twenty-two-seven, when we're going to put this vehicle up for auction. I hope at that time, we would still see a six-figure comeback, but you just
But versus selling it in twenty-thirty, if we started this process in
Exactly, yes. I mean, if we waited, if we waited any longer, I mean, every, the price is going to go up on the new, on the replacement vehicle, and our, our value of our, our current vehicle that we're looking to sell is, you know, slowly going to go down.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else for Chief? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve purchase of twenty-two-seven CIP project F dash zero-zero-nine tender to replacement from Rosenbauer Minnesota LLC, as well as the associated equipment and equipment mounting at a total project cost not to exceed one million, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars, and declare the two thousand and seven Spartan Gladiator tender pumper as retired equipment and approve the sale of retired equipment as detailed in the city's purchasing poly, policy upon delivery of new apparatus.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Seems like it's pretty straightforward, or
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I'll just say something real quick. I just, I really appreciate the, the looking forward on this and being a little more proactive with it. I mean, obviously, if this was looked at all of a sudden three years from now, and there was may, even worse issues that we're having with the pump, we'd be in a very different situation. So I do appreciate that we're looking at this head. Obviously, there's the financial side of it too, where every year, these are just going to keep getting more expensive, and we're going to be able to sell it for less and less. So just from a financial standpoint, we're getting the vehicle at the same, in the same timeframe that we were expecting it, but we're going to get it at that price versus having to pay significantly more than what we thought with that CIP. So, and that probably wouldn't have happened with as much like proactive, looking forward with this as well. So I really appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the purchase of the twenty-two-seven CIP project F zero-zero-nine tender to replacement, along with the previously F-009 Tender Two Replacement, along with the previously mentioned language regarding the sale and the not to exceed cost, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Number eighteen, which was previously on the consent agenda, is approved zoning text amendment for OPPUD. Go back to our... Would you mind, Director Stoppa, just giving a brief update on what was in the consent agenda?
Correct. So this item was approved at the October 1st meeting with one amendment, and that amendment has been added and is now being brought back as an ordinance and then a summary of publication resolution.
And can you, for people that may be watching, recall what the amendment asked to be added was?
The amendment was essentially, the density currently in the code is .45 units per acre, and we recommended going up to .8. The amendment was that you could only go up to .8 if you exited onto a collector road. So if you did not have access to at least one collector road, your density would stay at .45 units per acre.
Okay. All right. Is there any questions for Director Stoppa? Yes, Councilmember Beckstrom.
So I think that was probably discussed at the meeting on the first, earlier this month, which I wasn't at. Can you just provide an explanation for the addition of the collector road or greater?
Well, there is comments from the public. I think they wanted to make sure that there is a higher capacity road for the higher density, and that was added by someone from the council.
I did the amendment.
So the issue with density is solved by having a collector road?
No, the... To answer your question, from what I recall, Councilmember Beckstrom was, there was significant concern relating to having more, some more density along with the, you know, the appropriate open space that goes with it, that you would be putting this traffic on potentially lesser traveled roadways. So it was an amendment Councilmember Holt put on there to try and create that buffer of increased traffic on an appropriate roadway versus, say, a lesser traveled roadway. You have a question?
Yes. And so I know, Jason, we got a chance to talk about this just before the meeting, and this had been... I just received some public comments, just today from it as well, so I apologize for kind of the late notice on this. But I thought it was a good comment, and so on page four, where we're looking at density, and I just, I didn't catch this previously, where we switched from the 40 acres of buildable land area and instead replaced that with the word "total land area." I guess, and I know we got a chance to talk about it a little bit, and I think you mentioned maybe some residents had reached out to you, and you had a chance to reply as well possibly. But maybe if you could kind of give us a little bit of an explanation on that as well, what exactly total land area means versus buildable, and why that switch was made? I guess just one, so it's for the public awareness, and then possibly like for discussion point as well.
Okay, so initially, we had it at buildable land area, but with a density bonus, because there are sites that have less buildable land. Just, the buildable land is, doesn't include wetlands, slopes over 25%. Those are the sorts of things that it does not consider. It doesn't include also water bodies. So the total land is essentially, does not include water bodies either, but it includes the wetlands and the steep slopes. So when we talked about that at the workshop, and not having the density bonus, it was recommended that we could just look at total land area, so everybody is treated the same in terms of their density. And since most of these developments are going to be over 50% open space, they can find a way to fit that density into the buildable area and still get the same amount of units as somebody that would have more wetlands, because this type of development protects those wetlands. So you're going to protect the wetlands, the natural features, in the process of going through the plan unit development and going through valley branch watershed review. So we thought that they should have the same units and try to figure out where to place them on the buildable area.
With some of the previous OPPUDs, would that have changed the density allowances pretty significantly? Are you aware if that would have changed those?
Well, one of the reasons we looked at it is because we had two developments. One that was approved, that had a higher percentage of buildable land to total land, and one that had a lot lower percentage. There were wetlands and ponds and features, small features on the site. So you're still able to fit density onto the buildable area. Those areas would just become open space. So I thought that it made sense to kind of keep the density the same. But yes, it could definitely affect, and it could definitely affect a project if you had a large amount of non-buildable area. It would drive those numbers down, and then you wouldn't have a project that would be feasible for the site.
And to confirm, because you just mentioned, we're all, this proposal also gets rid of the density bonus, which we allow in other PUDs, but for OPPUD, it would no longer be a possibility.
No, because we added the stormwater reuse pond and some of the other features, we required that.
And I did have another one. So another question I received today from a resident about the... And this was kind of in relation to the, I guess I should have brought this up right away, with the roadways, the collectors. And so a concern was brought up that if, you know, the 40-acre lot that the OPPUD is originally being intended to be built on is bought, and then they purchase a lot adjacent to it, that somehow then it could become a collector road. One, I don't know if that's true, or if it would depend on like the location. I guess if you can speak to that at all?
So currently, the collector roads are in the comp plan, and there's a map in the comp plan, so...
It would have to be like an adjacent property that is somehow touching one of those collectors.
Exactly.
We do have somebody in attendance this evening who want to talk on this, this item. So we'll give you six minutes to speak. There's no discussion between council and speaker. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and we'll call Jane Charz.
Jane Charz, Post Office Box 769, Stillwater, Minnesota 55082. I do live in the rural district of Lake Elmo. I love something that you said earlier tonight. You said things set better with cooperation and collaboration. And I love the idea of these open space planned developments, but I am concerned about the density. And when you are talking about the difference between the buildable land and the total land, it is a significant change, and it is going to affect the traffic and everything else around that. You're talking about jamming a lot of properties in. I keep going back to the Clear Lake property, and I think all of us neighbors are still very concerned about that property. And it's not, it's a natural lake. It's not like a swimming lake. So could that potentially become the reservoir for wastewater and repumping and, you know, irrigation and stuff like that? That would really be a shame. That would deteriorate that whole property. And on that property, from what I recall, if, that's a 60-plus acre lot. So if you just take the 60 acres there, and only 15 of those acres are really buildable, and you measure the whole 60 acres, and you try to condense all of those homes down onto that 15 acres, you're going to have very high density in there. And it's going to affect the, all the environment around there. That's a wildlife space. And, you know, you say some really wonderful things in the copy. You write that the, to guide potential developers to preserve areas with natural resource value. Where is that defined? What is that? What measures are in place to identify and protect important natural resources? Again, it's a term that's not described. It's left subjective to the developers. Encourage, that is just, okay, it's a suggestion. Encourage developers, landowners, stakeholders, to integrate the value of natural resource systems. Again, where is that, and what is that? What is, that's subjective. Into the new development, all land use categories. And then, I'm just going to kind of go back to that same 3.2. The existing land use patterns in the rural residential areas should be protected through the planning period. Development consist, consistent with the city, the city's rural tradition. I don't know why we're pushing to have these, this capacity of development in the rural districts. I mean, it just is very upsetting. I'm just one neighbor here tonight, and I'm here because so many of my neighbors keep coming to me and talking to me about it, and asking me to come down here and talk to you guys. This is not my thing. I am, I am a, I'm a very private person, and I'm doing this because I care about my neighbors. I care about my property value, and I really care about the environment. I care about the wildlife, and where are they going to go? We live in nature. Nature doesn't live in us. So I just ask you to take a little bit more time and more consideration, and really get your heads around these numbers of these changes, because they are very significant. You know, like, so I don't understand if it's, you know, does it have to be contiguous? There's a 10-acre lot right next to me that joins another 76 acres by the same homeowner. So could that 10 acres have quarter-acre lots that just load that area because it's a flat piece of land? And then the other area across the street is open? Well, that's a 4,000% change from my property to that property. It's no longer rural district. And we're so far ahead of schedule right now. All of us rural residential, we're still rural residential. We're not RAD. We're not there yet. So I just beg you, please slow down, get your head around the numbers, really understand why do we need to put a blanket across the whole city? Couldn't we just go to the variance process with each of these developments? So it takes a little more time from city staff, but it would allow each homeowner to be notified so that they can come in and they can be aware of what's going on, because right now, a lot of people are not aware that we're even talking about this tonight. So I beg you, please postpone it for further discussion, further evaluation, and I beg you to please deny it. Let's see what other, that was that. And then, the other thing I think would really be nice that the city could do is perhaps, in addition to outlining what these, these natural areas are, you can still put overlays in addition to the DNR, in addition to the water district. Why do we have to have that be the minimum? Could you say, if you're going to build on that piece of property with that lake, that you have a greater buffer? I know you have problems with Downer Lake because there's so much development around it. Do we want to do that to Clear Lake? It's clean still. That area, we don't have contaminated wells up there. I just ask you to please reconsider approving this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Maybe just a quick clarification after that. So, you know, she was brought up the example of the property with Clear Lake with the Minnesota, I think it's, or Minnesota OB-GYN. About a third of that is lake. So if it's 41-acre lot, and 27 of that is land, the total buildable lot is 27 acres for that density calculation. That would...
That's, that's correct. I looked at, I believe it's 62 total acres, the parcel, and it's...
Oh, because is it the two?
I think it's 48.
Oh, they own both of those, okay.
Acres of total land.
Okay.
And then the portion of the lake that's on those parcels, because I just measured on GIS, is about 12.5 acres, because that extends south into a different owner one.
Okay.
And I think one of the things, too, to talk about with buildable land and total land, with an example that was provided of this site with the 60 acres, it states that at .45 homes per acre of buildable land, you would have 6.75 homes. If there was 15 buildable acres, and then with the .8, it brings that number up to total land to 48 homes on 60 acres. I think it illustrates the point of why we're making this recommendation, because if it was .8 apples to apple comparison of buildable in total, if you use the buildable, you would have 12 units that you could build on the site. And then, just with the 15 acres of buildable land, if you built 16,000 square foot lots, even though you would have the .8 of 48, you would only be able to build 34 units on that buildable land. So it's like a puzzle that we talked about. So someone could come in and find the 15 acres, build the 34 units on that site, and then it would result in 75% open space. So that's why we made that recommendation also, of moving towards total land, and why we recommended density bonuses if we were going to stay with the buildable back when we had the workshop. Councilmember Holt?
Clarifying question, because I fully appreciate and understand that that property, that's a specific property, and there are valid interests and cares about it. As I recall, we also have, we do have shoreline overlays for all of our lakes. And I, Clear Lake is one of them that has a shoreline overlay.
So it would be even more total acreage taken out.
As I recall, what happened with Legacy with Sunfish, essentially that, the way that overlay worked is density, what is normally allowed within the ordinance drastically gets reduced because of that overlay, essentially.
That's correct. There's tiers, and then also to have a... The lot size has changed depending on if it's sewered or unsewored, but let's just say the minimum lot size is 22,000 square feet. The only way that you could build a smaller lot is to have a plan unit development in a shoreline overlay, and that requires 50% open space. So it aligns with our open space ordinance, too.
Well, and, correct me if I'm wrong, we ran into this similar issue when there was a proposal for a development along 94 with that lake that is there.
Kramer?
Kramer. Because of that overlay. The overlay was essentially impacting in a way where it was just, it didn't work for the city, it didn't work for anyone.
Correct. And the conversations we've had with developers around the lakes, is that they should move to a low-density residential, even if they're in a sewered area, because it's so difficult to meet the standards of the overlay and then of the comp plan.
Any more questions? Yes, Councilmember Beckstrom?
One question. I don't know who to direct it to, but, so just help me understand why we're not using the comp plan 2025 process to look at the OPPUD versus council making a decision on it?
So we reviewed the comp plan to make sure that the text amendment aligns with the current comp plan, and density isn't talked about, some of the issues that came up. So that's kind of the main discussion, is related to density, lot sizes, all these things that aren't even discussed in the comp plan. So it seems appropriate, based on, I believe it was in the Planning Commission's work plan to look at it this year. I believe the council also asked for us to look at it and go through a workshop process. So we feel pretty confident that the changes are minor, but then will help promote development in the future.
Did, am I correct that Planning Commission denied the changes?
Yes, they voted to deny.
All of them unanimously denied the changes and referenced the comp plan process for this?
Right, the residents requested going to the comp plan process. We pushed the city back to 2030. That was one of the reasons they recommended denial.
Okay. Any more questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance 2024-17, approving the zoning text amendment to the Open Space Plan Unit Development Code as presented by staff.
You have a second? I'll second it for discussion. Discussion? Councilmember Holt?
I'm going to start with the items that are widely agreed upon. This strengthens and protects the environment in multiple ways, in terms of... This strengthens and protects the environment in multiple ways, in terms of codifying the expectations for what this community septic looks like. And from everything that we've been informed of from, by the subject matter experts, what's being put in code is the gold standard for community septics. I know something that as a city that we've struggled with in recent years has been many of our OP PUD neighborhoods that have an older style, and they're failing, and they're needing to be bailed out, and in some cases sewer works and is close by and can be brought in. And there are gonna be situations coming up with some of our others where that's not the case, and there are gonna be very tough decisions for those current residents because the technology was such that it wasn't a great one that was put in. This is calling for standards that are the best of the best. That is fantastic. That protects the environment. Same thing with requiring water reuse. We've had many great discussions on this council about the importance of water and codifying this and setting it as an expectation, to me, not only is it the right thing for OP PUD, but I think is something that we should actually be talking about for any new developments, as it's just the standard. That is a process improvement. Codifying, making simpler to understand and simpler to put in place larger buffers, to me is a positive. Putting in place an expectation of a higher percent of land that is protected and put away is a benefit. What this comes down to truly is the issue of, on now a smaller amount of land, because more is being protected, what is the appropriate number of units? And we have received passionate feedback from those who feel that there are higher numbers that they don't want, and I will say, I have received feedback from others, not here in person but elsewhere, that disagree. And I, I do not care, I said this last time, I do not care about developers or the profit margin. I do not. I cannot emphasize that enough, and I hope, I hope that no matter what people vote tonight, that even if one disagrees with what people vote on, that there is an understanding that this is not about developers. It is not. I support this on the basis of, we are strengthening and expanding the amount of protected land. We are protecting the environment. And honestly, that, one of the reasons for that amendment was based upon the feedback from residents, from a great resident who explained after the meeting last time that there is concerns of even now on some of the roads, so let's find a way to say, if there are future developments, put them on roads that can handle it. So that was an amendment based upon that feedback, because I, I do believe it makes sense. But no, I, I don't care about the developers. I could not care less. But, we do say in our comp plan that we promote and want to have more OP PUDs. We don't say in our comp plan what that density is for OP PUD. That is a city code issue. That is an ordinance issue. That is not a comp plan issue. The comp plan specifically promotes it because people like these. I think they're beautiful. I think they're fantastic. Do I live in one? No. Other people do, and they're fantastic for the city. The market changes, and right now, we have not had a new one since 2006. Yet our comp plan says we want to have more of them. Those two are juxtaposed. So this is not for developers. This is for the comp plan and aligning with it. But again, we have valid disagreements as to whether that means .45, .5, .7, .8. Those are valid disagreements, and it's not because someone doesn't care about the city. That is not the case. We just have differing views as to what is an acceptable amount while you have substantial buffers. And that's where I stand at this point.
What else?
Counselor Vextrum? Yes, I, I apologize this out of order, but I, I would like to propose an amendment to the motion. So I, I would like to just simply change that instead of a .8 density, that this is increased to a .6. Otherwise, the motion, the rest of the motion as is.
Second.
All right. So, we have amended to the motion to maximize the density to .6 units per acre as opposed to .8, as depicted in the current zoning tax amendment. Is that what I understand?
Yes.
You get that right?
Correct.
Are, are we going about this in the correct way, council?
Yes.
Yes. You have a second.
All right. So we have a, a motion and a second for an amendment to, to the motion to change the maximum density to .6 units per acre from .8 units per acre. Discussion?
I can just clarify, I guess, behind this, because I do agree with a lot of what Council Member Holtz said. I think there are a lot of positive benefits to these. I think there's a lot of positive benefits to the text changes that have been made to the OP PUD ordinance. I still do have a lot of concerns about the density. I'd hate to lose all of this progress just over the density, because we do know that there clearly is an issue where the density, where it's at right now, is making it apparently not feasible to even move in this direction. So I see this as a, a way of, we are showing staff that we are open to have a higher density than .45 that it previously had been. I don't want to also show developers that we're willing to double that density for them to just come to ask for a variance above and beyond that. Now, like Councilmember Dragicich mentioned last time, does this mean they can't come and ask for a variance now? Of course not. I just think, again, it's, it's that, the buffer of going from .8 to 1.0 per acre versus .6 to .8, or .6 to 1.0 units per acre, that's, it's a bigger ask, that's gonna be, receive more scrutiny from the council. So I would prefer to do whatever we can to meet somewhere in the middle with that, where we're showing, yes, we do want to change some of the code, we do want to make some of these changes with the, the, the boundaries that I think are actually really excellent changes there. The collector, again, maybe a little confusion on my part there with some of the collector roads, but if we as a council think that that will help solve some of those issues, then, you know, I think that's moving in the right direction. I just am not comfortable moving nearly double the density and changing the language from buildable to total. You know, I, I, maybe I could've said, okay, we keep it at .8, but we actually keep that language as buildable versus total. But I, I do agree that I think there's some really positive and simplistic aspects of going with total versus buildable. We're still minusing out the, the water, the shoreline densities. Those are gonna be brought into there in situations if that makes it not buildable. That's where the variance request can come in, and it can come to council, and we can discuss those. But that's my, I guess my thought process behind this, is I do like a lot of this, the density, I just, I can't make that jump.
Okay. Counselor Vextrum?
I'm stuck on the density, and while I think it's an improvement, if you can lower the .8 to .6, it's still not something that I, I feel like I can support. And I think it's, it's fairly disingenuous to say this isn't about developers, when really, the, one of the only reasons this is in front of us is because there haven't been any developments in the OP PUD since 2006, and we had a developer trying to get in there and couldn't meet the standards of, of what we laid out. And so, I do think this is about developers. I do think this is about getting more, more land developed in our rural area. And so, while there might be things within here that are, are great improvements from the reuse and sewer system improvements, that's great. Love it. Happy to, to support that if the density doesn't change. But I simply cannot support increasing density in the, the OP PUD when the entire intent of it is to, to be that rural feel in Lake Elmo. That is Lake Elmo. And I also think that we are doing a disservice to those residents that live next to these potential areas that could be developed. And I think, you know, we've, we've heard the feedback that, you know, it, it changes their, their community, their area where they live. It fundamentally, fundamentally changes the intent of the, the open space PUD, in my opinion, to change the density. And so, I don't support this at all, and I think we're making changes in...
Just, just to be clear, we're, we're talking about the, the amendment, not the overall...
Well, the amendment is to, to lower it to .6, so I might as well just get all my thoughts out now so I don't have to repeat it.
I'm just saying, if, if, so do you, it's gonna...
I don't support the .6. I don't support the changes to this, the OP PUD at all.
All right. So I'm just gonna call the question...
So I guess I have to be done now.
Well, I'm just gonna call the question and the amendment, because then the, the main motion would still be there, right? So that's the discussion we're having. I'm fine with changing it from .8 to .6 if, if that's a kind of a, a compromise point. I'll call the question and a vote on the amendment to the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes. So now we have the motion overall and the discussion that goes with it on, with the amendment. And I'm sorry that I wanted to bring it back to the...
Cut me off, but thank you.
Bring it back to the point that we were discussing on the amendment. If you would like to continue on the overall motion...
No, thank you. I was providing my feedback, and you rudely cut me off, so I have nothing more to say on this topic, other than I don't support it.
Thank you.
I'll just, I'll add one more thing. So, I, I don't know if you had a chance to listen to the, the last meeting where we discussed this a little bit, and, you know, obviously the developer conversation comes up, and I, I, I can completely understand how it can look that way, that this is trying to help the developers. I think I, I brought up the point that, for me, seeing the OP PUD that came to us previously, where it was the owners of the land that were unable, they, they wanted to preserve something with their land and do something special with it, and they were unable to do that. That was something that really kind of struck a chord with me. Now, I also mentioned at that same time that just because they can't sell the land for the price that the developers needed, I, I, that might be unfortunate, as bad as that sounds, and maybe the price isn't right then. But I think this is more than just about the developers. I think it's making it so people who own this land do have the option to go down this route, which I do, again, I think there is a lot of good aspects of these OP PUDs. I think they are, speak to the character of, of Lake Elmo, which I know, I've heard Councilmember Vextrum, you mentioned before that, you know, that you do feel that way with these, and I feel that way as well. So I, I would like to make it known that this is something we want to work towards using as an option for developing these land, or for developing the land. But again, I don't want to signal to the developers that we're willing to just double it, because I do think that is giving too much to the developers, and it does give a, a bad visual. So I, I understand that, but I think it is more than that, and, like I said, I, you know, I, I guess everybody's gonna have their own takeaways or thoughts on, on why we're making this decision, but I guess for me, that was a big part of it, is, you know, I'm looking at the homeowners as well, their ability to sell their land and to use their land, how they want it as well.
So I'm gonna talk on this, that I think there's a lot of good language that has been changed in the OP PUD. I do live in a development where we do have community septic and currently does not. We're struggling to meet the MPCA requirements that keep reducing the amount of nitrates that are available to come out of the system. The package plant that, that the PCA is requiring for these, and us including that in the requirement for an OP PUD, I think is of the utmost importance, because it does basically eliminate the nitrates and, and decrease the requirement, decrease the amount that's, that comes out of these system. It's almost like a small community treatment plant, if you will. I guess there, there, there are things that some people like to see and some things that other people don't like to see, to say that one thing is the right way, one thing is the preferred way, or one thing's the exact right way. That really doesn't exist. I, I think that staff has done a really good job at creating a balanced approach in which if the density is smaller, or the density's tighter, we're gonna end up with more open space. So this fallacy that this 60 acres is gonna look like it's overgrown with houses, well, no, it's gonna have a lot more open space, there's gonna be tighter density inside it, the buffers are there. I guess, some people might like to have that open space, along with a neighbor that's not half a mile away, a quarter mile away. You know, that's, that's, that's where I'm at with this, so I'm, I'm gonna support the motion, because I guess I just have a different viewpoint. Counselor Holtz?
With the, the full motion, the other, the other two points I was gonna make is, we, we have some OP PUDs right now where there are lot sizes under 60 foot. The southern end of Field of St. Croix has density that is denser than what we're talking about now, and obviously, and then that neighborhood is balanced with the rest of the neighborhood. So that, that was what made that work in that case. So I, I think that's a good reflection of how their solutions were found at that time. Obviously, it's before our time here. But I guess the other thing I wanted to mention for those who are watching, or for those who have provided feedback throughout this process, this is a PUD. It, it's not a regular application for a land use change. And with a PUD, as former council member, we, we had a former council member who, Mr. Dorschner emphasized time and time again, that PUDs really should only be voted for if there's a benefit to the city. And actually, himself, myself, and the mayor voted against a PUD about two years ago because the density was higher than what we thought was appropriate. And at that time, Councilmember McGinn and Councilmember Beckstrom supported it. So it, there, there are ways where, when it comes through the process, it's not an automatic thing. They have every right to apply, and we have every right to provide that feedback. So I, I don't want, if this does pass, I don't want the, the public to, to think that if a person applies for it, they're gonna get it. That, that's not, that's absolutely not the case. And I do want to emphasize, because there is valid concerns about specific properties. Neighbors have specific properties that they, they care about. In the case of Clear Lake, there, there are those overland, the shoreline overlay requirements as exists with our other lakes. But I, I, I like the compromise, I appreciate the feedback regarding the amendment to bring it down to .6. I think that is a, a valid use of collecting the feedback, taking it in, trying to find a, a solution that aligns with our, our comp plan goals, so I do support this.
All right. I'm gonna call the question on the amended motion. All those in favor, please, if, if, if in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion for publication. Can I just say so moved? That'd be fine.
Move to adopt summary publication of ordinance 2024-17 with approval of resolution 2024-107.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Since this is a publication, I'm not gonna call for discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We can't publish it then? It requires four votes.
Requires four votes.
So we, we have to publish the full ordinance?
All right. So we'll move the, we had, we would have three to one, so...
Motion to reconsider vote. Can I have a discussion?
Discussion.
I would just urge, as the resolution has passed, and this is a legally required act that we have to do to publish, that we would be able to have four votes for something that's legally required of us. that we would be able to have four votes for something that's legally required of us.
Otherwise, it has to just then come back when we have five council members, if we have one nay. Is that correct, council?
Yep.
Okay.
Maybe just, well, never mind.
Okay. Is there any indication that council Beckstrom would redo her vote for the publication?
No.
Okay, maybe I'll just make a comment. So, you know, I guess maybe my, something to consider is if, if we don't move forward with this, and this does come back, since we passed the first, the ordinance, can that be reconsidered then?
It's just, no, it's, it's already approved. It just has to go to publication, so it's just a vote for publication.
I, I see where you're going. I, I believe council member Hurn is asking, could council member Dragic ask us to reconsider the previous vote, and then he might offer to amend it back up to .8?
Which he will.
Correct.
Well, I shouldn't, I mean, I'm assuming based off of discussion. I mean, maybe he hears our discussion tonight, but I guess that is what I would, if that's something that's, could be done, that is my concern then, so maybe just something to consider if you're gonna stick with the, the no vote.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the ordinance is adopted right now. It's effective on, upon publication. So, I mean, if you just want to pay the publication costs and publish the whole ordinance, you can do that. The, the resolution for publication by title and summary is to save the city some money in publication costs by just publishing a summary of the ordinance instead of the entire ordinance.
Right.
So maybe you just want to publish it and be done with it.
What is that cost savings? I...
A city clerk might know.
It's quite a bit. If we publish the summary, it'll be about 40 or 50 dollars. If we publish that whole ordinance, I would bet it'd be a couple thousand, possibly.
So we're gonna have a motion to adopt summary publication of ordinance 2024-17 with approval of resolution 2024-107 for reconsideration. A vote?
Second.
All right. So can we have the discussion, council member Beckstrom, that it is in the best interest of the city's finances to publish a summary publication as opposed to the whole publication?
I imagine it is in the best interest of the city financially, but seeing as this council has repeatedly approved expenses that were not budgeted for, that are several thousand dollars, this is just one more line item, is it not? And beyond that, maybe considering viewpoint discrimination by this council tonight might also be something to ponder. Shutting down a council member as they're speaking on a topic against what everyone else is voting can surely be considered viewpoint discrimination, which is indeed illegal.
I guess I would consider, since we're opening that door, that it's Robert's rules to only have the discussion on the point of what is being amended to the motion, not the entire motion itself.
Then you need to apply Robert's rules across the board when council member Holtz is pontificating for 15 minutes at a time on every subject under the, the... You have different standards for different council members. I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Beckstrom, I do believe that I've, I've let extended periods of times go when you preferred to read from the paper. I'm not really, I really try and keep it fair in all honesty, and, and I'm sorry you see it that way. So... I'm gonna call for the question. All those in favor to adopt summary publication of ordinance 2024-17 with approval of resolution 2024-107, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. I appreciate that very much. So next on the agenda, we have council reports. Anything, council member Holtz?
Yes, and I don't know, Ms. Miller, if you wanted to discuss it yourself, our meeting today. I can go into it a little bit. We had a, a meeting today with, wow, now I'm not even gonna get the names right, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, some scientists who are really good at research, and then a specific company, I'm looking in my calendar.
Yeah, it's Bay West and General Atomic.
There we go. So they are, they are looking to partner with the city and the MPCA to try to utilize the, the waste essentially from the SAF, which is the concentrate of PFOS. That's at that trailer at Tablin Park. Try, they're, they have a technology that's existed for three decades. Essentially, where you're getting a 650-degree, I won't call it an oven, it's far more advanced than that, but you're essentially incinerating the heck out of it. And their goal is to try to work with the, the city as we are, you know, in a place where we don't want to be. We're on the front, front lines of the PFOS plume. So here's a good starting conversation. Obviously, there's many things to figure out. They're looking for a site to do this. There, there's a need to transport the concentrate to the site. There's an issue with XL for delivering the amount of power that's necessary for this. But I, I appreciate that Bay West and General Atomic are, are wanting to partner with us, that there is funding available, in part from the Department of Defense, as I recall. And I, I appreciate that city staff is also partnering with them as well, because I, I think, I, I don't, I would not be on a limb if I said residents would fully support this as well, in that it's finding solutions to a long-term problem. So again, it's taking the concentrate and destroying it. Filtering our water is one thing, but being able to take the PFOS from water and destroy it is a whole, it changes the, the ballgame completely.
Thank you. I have no report. Councilmember Hurn?
Uh, yeah, nothing to add right now.
All right, staff reports. Ms. Rader and Miller?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to thank the fire department for partnering with Thrive this weekend to do the workout in the park, to work out like a firefighter. It was great. It was a small community event, but it was, it was fun, and the firefighters made it look easy.
How did council member Hurn do?
I just, I ran the clock.
You did a great job taking pictures.
Okay, I did. Yeah, thank you very much, yeah, to the, the fire department for coming out. And I think it was Bill, Quinn, and, gosh, I'm forgetting, there's a couple other that were out there.
Bretton Dale.
Bretton Dale for coming out. Yeah, they did a great job. And I guess, just to add on to that, you know, I, I took a ton from it last year. I, of course, I went home and checked my fire alarms after, and I think they were installed in 1990s, so needless to say, I changed those. This year, I took away the, adding in the carbon monoxide down by the, the furnace. So it was a great workout, and it was a fun community event, but it was also very educational. And, and you guys are making a difference when you guys go out and do those things, because people do take that information, and they go home and, and do those things. So it is really appreciated.
Great. Ms. Johnson?
Just a quick reminder, early voting is currently underway. Today was the last day to register to vote, but you can register at the polls on election day when voting early, so don't be alarmed by that. Beginning Thursday, Oakdale City Hall will also be hosting early voting, so there's the other four Washington County locations plus Oakdale City Hall. And we will be conducting our public accuracy test of our voting equipment here at the city center on the 29th at 3:00 p.m., if anyone is interested in watching.
So it's open to the public?
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Director Stopa?
No report. Adler?
Uh, the quarterly financial report is in the pack, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that. And then probably the final reminder to please sign up for PIA. We will be turning that off, turning off PSN very soon. And my apologies to the mayor, they still have not been able to implement the usage, but they're working on it.
All right. Chief?
No, I just want to thank staff that helped out with that event. It's things like that where we try to get little nuggets of information on fire prevention out there, and hopefully, you know, one or two people, you can just take something away and, and use it in your lives. We wrapped up Fire Prevention Week last week, and we will continue to reinforce proper smoke alarm and CO alarm use, and always remind residents that you want to change those, those devices out after 10 years. You know, we, we consider a lot of our homes in Lake Elmo new, but when you're looking at it and you've been in your home for seven, eight years, it's probably time to start planning for that replacement of all those devices in your home.
Don't, don't some of them have an automatic chirp set at 10 years?
Yeah, I found that out yesterday.
Some of the newer ones do. Yep, and you may, you might start hearing that at, you know, year eight, year nine.
At like 3:00 o'clock in the morning?
Definitely. It's always gonna be the most inopportune time that that's gonna go off. And we always tell people, if you have questions, because there are, are a lot of different devices and a lot of different technologies out there, give us a call. We'd happy, we'd be happy to walk you through that process. But I do want to send out a, a big kudos to our staff. I had nine firefighters wrap up a month and a half-long mobile water supply class this past Saturday. We had four staff go out and, and help out with the community event. So our firefighters are definitely busy, keeping them on their toes. And it's not just running calls or working shifts here, but we're out and about, and they're doing a great job. So I definitely appreciate all their work that they do for us.
All right. Mr. Griffin?
No report tonight.
Ms. Insala?
No report.
All right. With that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting at 9:01. Thank you.
My alarm literally was going off at 3:00 in the morning the other day, because yours at the end, yours is a, apparently an 8...